Well, good evening Placerville. It's nice to see so many wonderful new faces out in the audience tonight. We appreciate everyone being here and for those of you who will watch us even live streaming or on TV, appreciate everyone being here. So it is November 27th, 2018, and it is my privilege to welcome you to the regular city council meeting. And with that, I'd like to invite you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have the roll call, please? Regina?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Clarici?
Yep.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here. Thank you so much. We are on item 3.1, Brief Comments by the Placerville City Council, and I will start us off tonight. Once again, you know, thank you all for being here. While the election results are not certified, we will probably have that at the next council meeting on December 11th. Looks like we have two new councilmember elects in the audience. I'd like to acknowledge them, and that's Councilmember-elect Dennis Thomas and Councilmember-elect Kara Taylor. So congratulations to you both. We look forward to welcoming you on December 11th. And let's see, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It was always wonderful to see our town in the holiday spirit with a festival of lights and the trees along the freeway. I know, gosh, as a little girl, I remember, that was one of my most precious memories. Every year coming into town to see my grandparents and the trees lit up, and that tradition continues. And I think that's one of the most wonderful sacred things about this town is that our charming traditions and the community love for this place is so abundantly evident, and I just love that. Speaking of love for our community, I'd like to acknowledge all of the efforts that have gone on these past few weeks to help our neighbors in Paradise. I know we are all still heavy with grief and concern, and they're in our thoughts and prayers, and that's well and good, but our community has also stepped up and forced to support them, and just would like to acknowledge that. The Rotary fundraiser at the fairgrounds was a smashing success on Sunday, and just, you know, good old-fashioned community showing up in support of our neighbors and, I think, raised what, close to eighty, ninety thousand dollars in one day?
I was told eighty-five.
Yeah, somewhere in there, and I know the checks keep coming in. That is amazing.
Wendy, what about the fund, the foundation fund?
So those funds will be going to the Rotary Club up in that area.
How much did that?
And then our other community fund that we started a week and a half ago, going through the Eldorado Community Foundation, we are about, we were at seventy-three thousand this morning.
Great.
But Jeff Thompson just gave us a check for about thirty-one hundred dollars from his employees at Thompson's for that fund.
So it's still going?
It's still going, so amazing. I'm just so proud of our community, and thank you for helping our neighbors in need. Dennis and I had the great pleasure of meeting the Vice Mayor of Paradise at the fundraiser on Sunday, and we chatted for about a half hour, and Greg Boland was just an amazing man, and hearing from a local government's perspective of all of the issues that they are undertaking and having to work through and figure out how to support their citizens and how to support, you know, and foster any kind of growth back and how to fund it, it just, I can't even imagine the immense challenges. So it was a real privilege to have him here, and he was so grateful to our community, and he felt your support, so.
It was nice he came up here.
It was amazing. And speaking of that, I'd like to have the chief highlight a few of our officers who have recently helped, I believe, over Thanksgiving weekend. So Chief Ortega, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it was brought to my attention last, whatever, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving that, you know, we're on the mutual aid, state OES call-out list for, to give help as receive help if needed. We received a request to send officers up to Paradise. The challenge was going to be, is that it was going to be starting Wednesday night into Thursday and into Friday and then Saturday. Well, guess what? Three officers willingly jumped at the chance. The three that have those nights off chose to go up and assist our fellow officers and deputies in need, and they spent their Thanksgiving for three, you know, over three days up in Paradise. Sergeant Ron Cannon, Officer Isabel Zacharias, and Officer Amber Robinson all volunteered. And again, we didn't have to order them. I could have said, hey, I'm sorry, I don't have the staff, I don't have anybody to volunteer, but they willingly did, and they were up there with dozens of other officers from all over the state of California that did the same thing.
Wow.
So we all definitely feel the grief, and our hearts are heavy for the people of Paradise, including our first responders. Half of the police department lost their homes, seventeen CHP officers and twenty-six sheriff's deputies lost their homes, and I lost count of the number of firefighters that lost their homes, and yet every one of them is still up there working, so.
And five councilmembers.
And all five councilmembers, exactly.
Yeah, that's ironic, just.
And they're all still working because they know that's what they have to do. That's just the business we're all in, so. Thank you for acknowledging and giving me a chance to talk about that.
Oh, thank you.
Because I'm, needless to say, I'm very humbled and proud of their efforts there.
Well, thank you so much. That shows who we are as a city and as a community as well, so thank you so much. That's just fantastic. And last thing, the Christmas parade is this Sunday, and once again, that is just a wonderful show of the best of our community, and Broadway is, in fact, there's Sue Taylor, who the Hangtown Ice Cream Saloon is sponsoring once again this event. We sure appreciate that, working with our city staff to put this on. And Broadway closes at noon? Is it?
Sooner, I think.
Yeah, Broadway will close at noon. The parade starts at one, so just kind of plan accordingly and look forward to seeing everyone there. All right, I will move to my left. Councilmember Clarici?
I have nothing except that my son was also detailed up there to provide law enforcement help at the firesite.
Because?
Because he's a policeman.
He's a policeman?
Yeah, anyway, and so haven't had much of a chance to talk to him since he's been back, but apparently it's pretty rough up there, and we've reached out to Jody Jones. Actually, we're trying to put together, you know, I have a life outside of this, and put together a consortium of consultants that would work pro bono and assist the city. I'm pretty good friends with Jody Jones and have known her for years, the mayor, and we've reached out to her and let them know that there's a group of consultants that wants to help.
Oh, that's great.
It's a fascinating rebuilding concept when you think about it. And so, you know, most of the time you have a fire, the Santa Rosa Fire burned a lot of houses down, but the city was still there, so there was still the city hall and the services were still there. In this case, the city's been wiped almost off the map, and it's just interesting, and I work with a guy who lost a house up there. So anyway, but no, that's it for me.
Well, thank you so much. Your skills will be much appreciated. Councilmember Saragosa?
I just want to echo Mayor and Councilman Clarici's comments. The city's just done a fantastic job of reaching out to our fellow citizens in Paradise between the Rotary and the Community Foundation and just everyday people. I saw it on Facebook, I saw it on Nextdoor app, I saw it in business windows. Everybody was coming together to do their part. I think we all know we could be just like Paradise here in Placerville, but just beyond that, just the human element of the whole thing, so. Want to thank the police department as well for sending officers up, volunteering to go up. It's just been a really great thing to see in terms of, in a time when politics and a lot of things can be kind of nasty, it's good to see the human heart reach out to our fellow citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Borelli?
Yes, the last meeting, you had a proclamation for the DAR, the Daughters of American Revolution. So I attended their official tea.
Oh, thank you.
It was really, it was wonderful. It was a high tea. I felt like I was at the Empress in Canada.
Fancy.
Anyway, and I, they had me read the proclamation.
Great.
And they said, be sure and thank the city council and everybody, but it was a lovely afternoon, so.
Thank you for representing us. That's really important. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor Acuna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me just echo on behalf of the community, a thanks to you and Councilmember-elect Dennis Thomas for your constant efforts in representing Placerville since you launched the Give a Hundred Dollar, Hundred Thousand Dollar Challenge a couple of meetings ago now, and the constant updates and effort that you put in. Dennis has proven that you do need to go and stay home when you're sick with a cold because he suffered through a number of updates for a very, very important cause, and it represented Placerville on social media, and I think just the way we would want it to be represented, a small town caring about another small community. So thank you on behalf of the community for those efforts, and thank you Dennis for your efforts in being on those videos. I know it was not easy, and it's very emotional, the outpouring from the community. It really tugs quickly at the heartstrings to all of us that are committed to protecting and serving. I do want to let folks know that I do have some information, I'm not going to bring it forward this evening, on a little summary as to what the outcome was from our modest attempt at traffic calming on Clay Street in that area with the last Apple Hill rush. I've had it for a while, I just haven't felt that it was appropriate to bring it forward with, given the disaster that's occurred in Paradise. I would like to do a shout-out for the mayor of the city of Oroville, who went on social media last night, I think where Oroville is, down at the foot, to the south of Paradise. And this is another example of communities. Santa Rosa, Napa, Sonoma learned how to establish effective resource centers, and so they took what they learned up to Oroville, who if you recall, they had the big flood threat two years ago. They've cooperated with the city of Oroville, and the city mayor went on social media, something that she didn't do apparently very often, because they have a beautifully set up and fully stocked community resource center there that is sadly being underutilized because the Paradise victims are so spread out and the communication system is so broken in that whole community, that they're having a hard time getting the Paradise Fire victims down to take advantage of this. So she went on and did something last night. So I thought, you know, here's another example of a small town, a little bigger than us, but still, that same, we all face the same challenges, and there they are. They have learned, and I saw in the back of the video of it, spectacular job. These resources are there. There's been an amazing number of connections between family members and old former and past residents between Placerville and Paradise, so it bears mentioning again this evening that if you know somebody that's looking for help, please check out the city of Oroville. They have the fully-staffed and ready-and-waiting resource center with clothes, you know, funding, resources for housing, et cetera, et cetera.
That is so ironic, because if you remember, that was one of my reasons I've been, you know, calling for this plan that we need to establish, but the city of Oroville, in fact, the mayor was not, nobody knew where she was when all their disaster happened, and they were not prepared. So they've learned.
They are very prepared.
It sounds great.
And they're doing their best to help the residents of Paradise.
That's great, I'm glad to hear it.
Again, thank you to everybody that's helped. On a little happier note, I would like to end, or, I mean, I'm very proud of all of our small communities stepping forward, but I would like to, see if the mayor would like to announce to the public that we were successful in selecting a new member for our planning commission earlier this evening.
We certainly were. Thank you so much. Yes, we do have a new member who's very excited and engaged, and that is Barbara Rains. She will be a phenomenal asset to the city, and we welcome her. She was sworn in tonight, and she'll get to work soon, so congratulations Barbara, and she's very excited to be on board, and so are we. So thank you all for your comments, always appreciate it. Item number four, closed session report. City Attorney Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Tonight, council did not take reportable action in closed session.
All right, thank you so much. So that we have the adoption of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And now, my favorite items are always the ceremonial items, and this is a chance where the city council has an opportunity to celebrate, recognize, and acknowledge people in our community that are an integral part of who we are. And this is my last full meeting on the city council, and before I left office, this is something that I wanted to do. The Thompson family is just, I can't say enough about how important they are to this community, and I don't think folks realize the impact that their business and their heart makes on the citizens of this community. And it's so easy to, you know, as we go about our busy lives, we take the goods and services that we have available in our community for granted. It's very easy to do. We think if people are successful in business that, you know, it's all about them, and we don't think about what they do for us. And so, like I said, before I left, I wanted to make sure the community understood how important the Thompson's dealerships are and the Thompson's family is to this community. And I'm sorry Ron can't be here tonight, he is on a plane, but Jeff, we are so delighted you're here, so I'd like to invite you to come to the podium, Jeff Thompson. And Jeff, it's his birthday tonight, so before I do the proclamation, we're going to sing Happy Birthday. So, here we go.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Jeff, happy birthday to you.
And many more.
We couldn't let that pass up, because I, you know, thank you for sharing your birthday with us, but time was of the essence. I'm leaving soon, and so I wanted to get this done.
And my dad not being here, but thank you so much for the recognition. We obviously don't do what we do for recognition, but we're truly blessed to live up here amongst all these wonderful people in this beautiful hillside, and to be able to give back and support, it's just an unbelievable feeling.
Well, you do it in spades, my goodness.
Yeah, and thank you for my Rotary Brothers and Sisters for showing up. This was a nice surprise.
And we have a lot of members of the Rotary Club, including the President Kirk Ruffetto, and just key members of our community here to support you. So with that, I would like to read this proclamation, so everyone has a deeper understanding of who you are and how important you are to this community. "A proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville recognizing the Thompson family for their profound and meaningful contribution to the city and our community. Whereas in the 1970s, Ron Thompson began washing cars for Frank Hurling Chevrolet in Sacramento, working his way up to general manager 26 years later. With visions of his own dealership, Ron Thompson and his wife Betty sold everything, and with a loan from Frank Hurling, searched the region before landing on Placerville as a site for their new dealership. With fourteen new cars, they opened for business. In 1994, their son Jeff Thompson left his job to join the company, working his way up to executive general manager of Thompson's Toyota and owner of the Chrysler Dodge Jeep dealership next door. Whereas the Thompson's franchise has been successful by being adaptable to changes in the market and the economy. During the Great Recession, Thompson boldly embraced digital marketing and sales. Now, sixty percent of Thompson's sales are out of the country, with sales of used cars going to customers as far away as Russia, South Africa, and Dubai. The city of Placerville receives up to two percent of sales tax on every transaction, and in total, Thompson's auto dealerships are the largest contributor of local sales tax in the city of Placerville. The Thompson's were also instrumental in the relocation of Home Depot inside the city limits. And during the Great Recession, the Thompson's dealerships and Home Depot combined equated to roughly thirty-eight percent of Placerville's local sales tax revenue, enabling the city to survive the economic downturn. Beyond that, the Thompson's family is all about community. As active participants in the Placerville Rotary Club, they were also instrumental in the construction of the Western Slope Boys and Girls Club. They have been involved with numerous charities in the community, with the bulk of their good work and support going sight unseen. From donated vehicles, to financial support, to service projects, to work with local law enforcement, the Thompson family has been an integral part of our city and county. Now therefore I, Wendy Thomas, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby proclaim that the Thompson family and their dealerships have made a profound and meaningful impact to the city of Placerville, and we extend our deepest gratitude for choosing Placerville as the home base for their business operations and community support."
Thank you so much, Wendy. Appreciate it.
And hopefully Tracy has dinner at home waiting for you, because I know you like birthday celebrations at home. Talked to her on Sunday. Wow, thank you all for helping us celebrate that, that's really important. And with that, the public comment, this portion is now you. It's, please feel free to talk about any item that is not on our agenda, and please state your name for the record, and this meeting is now yours.
Good evening, members of the city council and staff. My name is Mickey Kaiserman. I'm a citizen of Placerville, member of Peak, member of Mezzor H&amp;L, future member of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District representing Placerville, replacing Dennis Thomas, who has been elected to the city council. The tragedy of the Paradise wildfire has hit home with all members of our community. I'm not sure if this issue has been discussed or is a future agenda item. I would like to propose to the city council that the city provide education to the public through coordination with the fire department, with updates through the water and sewer bills on the following. One, what citizens can do to make their homes and businesses more defensible in case of fire. Two, citizens' emergency warning sign-up to evacuate through reverse 9-1, via mobile devices, email, and landlines. Number three, the establishment of a siren warning system. This siren could sound every day or some other time, that same siren would be the warning to notify people to evacuate. We must be proactive, as fire requires three ingredients, a spark, the fuel, and oxygen. We can partially control the spark, and we can mitigate the potential fuel by cutting back trees close to homes and power lines and removing brush. New building code requirements save some structures and lives in Paradise. Underground power lines would prevent power line fires. Possibly, as the city is repaving streets, we can install underground pipes for future electrical and fiber optic lines. This is the, there is the potential for more fires with climate changes expected to continue. Now is the time to act while everyone's fire awareness has been raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey, appreciate it.
Good evening. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, member of Mezzor H&amp;L, and it won't do very much good for us to do Mezzor H&amp;L and repair all our infrastructure if we burn down. People need to understand that on their private property, they are responsible, absolutely responsible, for providing defensible space, and if they don't, and they are found to be liable because of a fire start, they are also liable for all the costs associated with the fire, not only to put it out, but the costs of losses and the cost to rebuild. All of those are something that is a liability if you are found to be responsible for starting a fire. There are a lot of places in Placerville that have ignored their fire clearing limits for a very long time, and if we want to see our city go up just like Paradise did, we can continue along that line, but I would urge the city to get out there and do some code enforcement on those fire clearing limits. A hundred feet or to your property line needs to be fire-safe. You don't have to cut down every single tree, but you need to raise the skirts on the trees so that there's clearance between the ground and the lower branches, and you need to make sure that it's not dry and flammable and easily marching from one little patch of vegetation to the next. And if people will do that, and the people who did that had their homes survived in the Angora Fire, in the, in the, I mean, there's, there's a list of fires that I could go through. The Star Fire had homes where there was defensible space, and when you have a fire crew coming in to fight a fire like that, the first thing they do is look at a place and say, can we save it? Do they have their defensible space? If they have their defensible space, it's worth trying to save that home. If they didn't do their defensible space, forget it, it's not worth risking your life for. So please, Placerville, clean it up, and now is the time to get started. Not in August, when we're already in fire season. Now that the rains are here, it's not the most fun time to get out there and work, but it's the safest time to get out there and work. So do your defensible space now. Defensible space is a winter project.
Thank you, Sue, for that important reminder for all of us. Any other comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Colonel Smith. A couple sessions ago, a couple weeks ago, the last session, you took care of the matter of the courthouse adjoining buildings, the old city hall buildings, and just out of notice, I haven't read anything about it, I presume that it's on the website.
It was up yesterday, yes.
I'm sure it is. Out of a population of 10,000, I'm not sure there are very many people to take a peek at that, but what's been done to publicize it, because I haven't read anything out in the general circulators, what's been done to publicize it? You've only got about five weeks, and in the case of the Arts Council, they already had their proposal ready to go, so they have necessarily an advantage, but it would take quite a while for somebody new to put that into gear, so. One of the suggestions made last time was about getting the word out to a wide area. I just wanted to find out what was done about that. And then when I read some of the fine print, it looks like one of the options is to consider purchase of the building. It talks about ownership. What would that necessarily entail, selling the buildings, or is that option available according to the proposal? And I guess, since there's a few moments to switch back to fire, we have a code enforcement version, I think it was hired early in the year, but certainly that's, you have staff that handles code enforcement. How many cases of code enforcement was there regarding defensible space? Was there any, any action taken about any problems like that this last year? It'd be helpful to know what was done in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Either on general comments or on the proclamation that was issued tonight? If anyone wants to speak in support of that, I should have offered that earlier, so. All right, seeing that, I will close public comment, and thank you all for being here, really appreciate it. And would like to highlight that, you know, fire is on all of our minds, and, gosh, shortly after the Paradise Fire, the city received a call from an expert in Roseville, who has offered pro bono work to help us develop an educational campaign for exactly what was talked about tonight, and so our city staff and our council is working on that right now. So we agree with you, it's on the forefront of all of our minds, and we will be actively working that to help our community be safe moving forward. All right. Any written communication?
No.
All right, none. Consent calendar, all matters considered under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any change? No?
Move the consent.
Second?
All right. Any member of the community want to talk on any item on the consent calendar? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you. No ordinances? We're on public hearings, item 11.1, and this is consideration of Planning Commission's recommendations for a general planned amendment, a conditional use permit, and a site plan review for Neiman's Auto Touch located at 136 Forney Road. So with that, Mr. Ravas, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a request by property owner Ron Thompson to construct a new, single-story, 5,800-square-foot auto detailing shop building, an attached 1,455-square-foot covered vehicle wash station, and associated parking area and landscaping, which is to be used as a new shop location for the existing Neiman's Auto Touch business that's currently located at 126 Forney Road. The new building at the project site is to be accessed by employees only. The new building at the project site is to be accessed by employees only with no public access. The existing lobby and office for Neiman's would remain in its current location at 126 Forney Road. To serve the customers with the proposed new facility would be located at 136 Forney Road. The two-acre project site is currently used as a temporary, unsurfaced vehicle parking area for the Thompson Auto Center and surrounding uses. The property is currently designated commercial by the general plan and is also zoned commercial. The current language in the city's general plan excludes auto sales and services as an allowable use within the commercial land use designation. However, the commercial zone district currently allows for auto sales and services under a conditional use permit. So here we have an inconsistency between the general plan and our zoning ordinance. A total of 15 existing auto sales and service uses currently operate within a commercially zoned lot in the city. Eight of these operate under a conditional use permit, with one of these conditional use permits being approved in 1994. So that being, that approval was done in conflict with the general plan that was adopted in 1990. Others appear to have had been continuous operations of auto-related uses prior to and probably since the adoption of the 1990 general plan. The proposed general plan text amendment would provide for internal consistency between the general plan and the commercial zone district for all properties within the city so zoned. Removing the auto sales and service exclusion has the potential to result in the future applications requesting these types of uses in the commercial land use designation. However, and I want to really emphasize this to the council, any future applications would be subject to conditional use permits requiring a finding of consistency with the general plan and would also allow the city full discretion to approve, modify, or deny future applications. And the reason why I emphasize this is because this proposed amendment to the general plan text does not create a by right for these types of uses in the commercial zone. The requested auto service use would be desirable, convenient, and beneficial to the public and that it would be located in an area currently containing existing concentrated auto-oriented uses near access to and from Highway 50. Proposed site grading and building design, as submitted and as conditioned, do not detract from the character of the adjacent auto sales and service uses. The site grading is minimal to accomplish project construction and the building is limited to the site that would be consistent with all the surrounding uses. The request is therefore consistent with the general plan, community design elements, and policies regarding grading activity, building appearance, form, and function. This application was considered by the Planning Commission at their November 6, 2018, meeting. The commission recommended that the council approve the general plan text and amendment and development application as recommended by staff. I just want to note that Jeff Thompson and Jim Dillingham of D and Z Engineering are present to answer any detailed questions regarding the construction of the project. And so with that, staff is recommending that the council do the following. One would be to adopt the resolution, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and approve general plan amendment 1801. Approve the conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And then three, approve the site plan review as contained in your staff report. That concludes staff's report. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Great. Thank you so much for that excellent staff report. In reading the whole application and the Planning Commission process, it's certainly been a very thorough process and it's a very complete application. So at this point, does the council have any questions on this item?
I have one.
You bet.
And I'm sorry that I was gone last week and I didn't get a chance to ask Pierre this, so I'm going to ask it now. It's a, it's a, these washing stations can sometimes be kind of loud. I happened to stay in a motel right next door to one and it was pretty loud all night long. And I'm wondering if there's been any, any questions like from the neighbors or if this has been brought up at all.
Staff has not received any comments from the public or from surrounding property owners. I will defer to either Ron Thompson or Jim Dillingham to describe the washing station. It's my understanding that it's not your typical automatic washing vehicle, washing facility you would see, say, at a gas station or something of that nature. It's more of a, more of a hand washing. It's a detailing shop.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where they use, you know, vacuums and that kind of thing. It's within an enclosed building.
I didn't know if there's any kind of a carry, and I really, it's kind of oranges and apples because that was definitely a car wash that I was trying to sleep next to. Anyway, so, but I, it just kind of, the question popped in my mind, so, thank you.
Good, good question.
Any other further questions at this point for staff? No? All right. I'd like to invite the applicant up. Is it Jeff? Or is it, or would you like, or come on forward and say, would you like to say anything about the project? Just welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. To answer your question on the pressure, the pressure washer, actually, pressure washers and their containment inside of building, they're electric, so they make pretty much no noise at all.
Great. And can you state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
Steve Neiman.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anything else you'd like to say about the project?
I don't think so.
All right. Well, it's exciting to see you expanding and certainly as I've gotten my car at Thompson's, one of the Thompson's dealerships, use your services next door. It's super handy and it's nice to see it expansion, so.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you. I'll open, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Would any member of the public like to speak on this item? Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
Trevor Van Cleef. I'm a neighbor, longtime neighbor of the Thompson dealerships and having gone through the plan myself, I've worked in the building industry. And my one concern with it, we did have some concern about the noise, but an electric will make a big difference, is there's no site lighting plan that was submitted with it. And I noticed in the back area where we're, our property is on 12 Oaks Lane, which is about 500 feet from, from the center of that parcel to our front door. So a lighting, any lighting would have a direct impact on our residents. And I just wanted to know if there's any plans for a site lighting plan or if you're going to light up that parking area back there?
We'll get that answered, yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Jim, did you have, did you, please come, yeah, please come on forward, Jim. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. I'm Jim Dillingham from DZ Engineering and we're the design leads for the project.
Can you pull the microphone up? I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
As far as the site lighting goes, we did submit a site lighting with the package and there's very little lighting that's, that's, actually, I don't think there's any parking lot lighting. It's all just on the building shining down. We've got overhangs that would protect the upper properties that wouldn't be able to see those lights on the building. So in reality, I kind of felt like there should be more for security's sake and there is going to be some light coming off the Toyota dealership and Dodge dealerships that will reflect the storage area to the new site. But as far as I know, there's no outside lighting that's being proposed right now besides it's on the building itself.
All right. Thank you for answering that. Any other public comments? All right, I will close this public hearing and bring it back to the council for action. Any members of the council have any other questions or comments? They would like to make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All right. So do we need a roll call vote on this? I don't think so. No. Yes, yes, please. All right. It's public hearing, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, we can submit.
It's general panamim and I knew that. You think after eight years, I, yeah. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Best wishes on your new extension and thank you for being here tonight, so. Happy birthday. Get out of here.
Yeah, happy birthday. I'd like to thank staff for the thorough report on this.
Yes, it certainly is.
And there was a, there was a lighting plan. And the fact that the neighbor showed up from 12 Oaks proved that you notified, because I have a coworker that lives off of 12 Oaks. And so you did go out and you did your radius regardless of city limit lines. Thank you very much for being thorough. Excellent report. I was only hoping they could use the empty building to sell another product, another automobile line.
All right. Thank you all. We now move on to item 12, discussion action items and 12.1. Adopt a resolution to approve a revised job description and organization chart for our city departments. So that's very exciting. Mr. Morris, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Yeah, the purpose of this item is to do some reorganization. As council is aware, we have some retirements coming up. A couple of those are, that will be going through in the next month are.
We don't want to talk about that.
No. I know, I don't either. Some, some long-term employees that we sorely missed and hard to replace. So with that happening and other, other issues and efficiency looks at our city, I'm proposing to do some reorganization. And I can basically run through this in this manner. As you know, back during the recession, or actually just kind of at the end of the recession, we reorganized to where we put Public Works underneath Community Services or basically under Parks and Recreation, which was under Steve Yule. As you know, Steve Yule is one of those that is retiring. So that not, didn't, doesn't force us to this, but it created the opportunity for us to look at this and see how we might operate more efficiently. So the recommendation before you tonight is to do some things that will, I think, help us operate more efficiently, help us keep the city running efficiently and working well. And that is, just briefly, it will put, separate out the Department of Public Works, which will be streets, water, sewer collection, storm drain. I think that covers it pretty much, doesn't it, Rick?
Wastewater.
Steve? So we will, we'll divide those out, create a department head position for those that will report directly to the city manager. We are also taking the water reclamation facility, which is our wastewater plant, which is currently, at that same time that we did that, we put that under Engineering and the Department of Development Services. We're going to take Engineering and the wastewater, water reclamation facility out of Development Services and create a Department of Engineering. And the city engineer will become a department head also. And the water reclamation facility, which is our wastewater treatment plant, will report, will be under the city engineer. And again, the city engineer as a department head will again report directly to the city manager. So those are the primary changes that are taking place. With that happening, obviously, I'm excited with the Department of Development Services and our Development Services Director, Pierre Rivas. We heard a lot tonight about code enforcement. I'm hoping that this will free up some time for him to have that as one of those things that he can focus on. He is already, I'll give Pierre credit, extremely busy. We've had a lot of development, actually, proposals, applications come in over the last couple of years and as we came somewhat out of the recession. And so I think that this will enable him to focus more on that development issue, on the development issues, and also on code enforcement, which is going to be a big factor for us going forward.
We've all got a list.
And I think that will really. I know, we've all got a list, yeah. So I think this, this new organization will allow him to do that. He's been spread pretty thin between supervising the engineering department, or want to give credit to our city engineers, he does a great job, but still has that supervision over that. And with the adoption of Measure L and the implementation of that has created a huge workload there, as well as issues with the water reclamation facility. And I want to compliment Pierre, he's done a great job on that. Also want to recognize Steve Yule for his supervision of public works. I think he'll, he would be the first to admit going into that, his comment was that he didn't know anything about public works. But his management style and his involvement and the way he has handled that has been done very well and I appreciate all that he has done. With this change, obviously, we will have the, the Community Services Department will go back to what it was originally, which will be supervising Parks and Recreation and facilities primarily, and the Aquatic Center. And the other change that is being proposed with this reorganization is a promotion of Dave Warren, who's our Director of Finance right now, making that a combination Assistant City Manager slash Director of Finance. I pretty much treat Dave like that anyway now. As you know, whenever I'm out of town, you usually get an email or something from me stating that Dave will be one, answering the calls while I'm gone. And so I really appreciate what he's done and I think that he can provide some assistance there. If you look at the organizational chart, you'll see that I'm also proposing a Assistant Director of Finance or Assistant Finance Director position. However, we're recommending that that position not be filled at this time. So Dave will take on that duty too at this time, so. But it will, it, I wanted to put that in there to show that that is the direction that we should be striving to move towards, that will free up that time for other projects that I can take on and that Dave Warren, as an assistant to me, can also assist me with and take on. But before we can really take that on the way we need to, we'll need to find a way to hire that Assistant Finance Director position. And at this time, the finances are not there to be able to do that. So we will hold off. I want to look at it in this coming year's budget and see if there is a way to do that. But at this time, we're recommending that that position not, not be filled, but it will be part of, of the, the organization. Attached with your agenda tonight, you have job descriptions for each of these positions that I've referred to, to make those changes that are necessary. You did receive one in your packet, however, there, we discovered some minor inconsistencies and some corrections that needed to be made on those, so you have new sets of those tonight. I don't think there's anything in those that don't reflect what is in my staff report and what I was recommending going forward. It was just, some of them were just simply some formatting grammatical things and then there were some other things that were left out of one or another job description that needed to be completed. So.
Could, okay, I haven't had time to read all this. So is there anything you need to point out that we need, that, because we just got these tonight, so.
Sure.
Can you tell us?
On the new job descriptions?
On the new, which, yeah.
Well, the new job descriptions, they're basically the same as the old.
Okay.
There were some grammatical things. There were also an error. I don't know how it happened exactly, but for example, I still had wastewater treatment under the Public Works Director rather than the City Engineer. So that was corrected and placed accordingly. I'm trying to think, I went over this with Mayor Thomas. Do you remember anything else?
I went over these with a fine tooth comb and we talked about this this morning with Mark and Cleve. And it's just, like you said, changing tenses and.
I just wanted to make sure.
The biggest, the biggest difference was the fact that the wastewater duties weren't, weren't separated out properly according to this org chart. And that was probably the, the most substantial change. Otherwise, they were just tweaks of the way something was said to be more readable.
Exactly. Exactly. So, so the last part of this, as noted, there are some, some changes to the salary table accordingly for that. The Public Works Director is, that position is being upgraded to a department head and there's a salary change accordingly with that. The total projected cost of the reorganization at this time is actually, it's savings at this time, of about $7,000. There is a slight increase to the sewer fund and the water fund of about $1,000, but the overall cost for the entire program that we're recommending right now is a savings of about $7,000. So with that, what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve the revised job descriptions for the positions of Director of Community Services, Director of Public Works, Director of Development Services, City Engineer, and the Assistant City Manager slash Director of Finance positions. And authorize staff to proceed with the associated personnel changes. And then number two is to approve and affirm the new salary schedule effective December 29th, 2018. This will basically take for, take place at the beginning of the year, 1st of January is where we'll make these changes. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let me, just a few comments and then we'll answer for questions. Cleve, I'd just like to commend you on this. I know you've been working with this for a while and your leadership on relooking at our city is proof to the, is a testament to the proof that the city, a city is a living fluid organism. And you are faced with having to deal with the realities, economic realities, that change over time. And I'd like to commend all of our staff for helping us weather the great recession. And when, you know, you had to reorganize the city, like I said, four, five, six years ago, and combine those departments, all of you were willing to step up and to take on areas that maybe weren't in your wheelhouse, but you had to do what it took to make our city survive. And, you know, I'd. but you had to do what it took to make our city survive. And, you know, I'd really like to commend Steve Yule and Pierre Rivas especially as department heads for, for taking on those duties and, you know, learning on the job and managing our city efficiently and effectively and competently. And the fact that we, you know, survived that and are thriving is a testament to your leadership as well. And really would like to acknowledge your work in all of this. And it's greatly appreciated. And, and now with, you know, Steve Yule retiring, we're faced, we've come to another time that its economics have turned around a little bit, and it's time to rethink and say, how can, what makes sense going forward. And so the organization chart before us tonight, I think, you know, reflects that. So I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate, we appreciate everyone's flexibility to rethink things and relook at things as to move our city forward productively. And especially in light of the new Measure L monies, things are different now than they were a couple of years ago. And we actually have money to, you know, fix our roads and our streets and our pipes. And that brings new duties and new realities to the workload of our staff. So I think this is very creative and exciting. So with that, Vice Mayor Cunha.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would echo those same comments, something I've been pestering Cleve for a long time, to get this accomplished. And this is a big undertaking. And as usual, his slow and steady got it done. Kept, kept everything else running in the city at the same time. Couple of questions. I'm concerned about a tremendous oversight that I see here. And that is the city attorney.
Oh!
I do not see the city attorney. I looked under Police Department, I double-checked safety, public safety, people in charge of guns, nothing there. The city, and he is without a doubt the most reasonably priced city attorney in the state of California.
Because Mark, he's actually on the previous page, in a box above everybody.
Yeah, well, there's days he belongs there. But Cleve is, I'm sure that wasn't intentional.
That was not, that, that will be corrected. He should be right there next to Commissioners and Committees underneath the city.
No, John, you can't leave.
So, John, you're, and, and I got to say, I had penciled you in, and Cleve just put you in higher than I had penciled you in, so.
He's above me.
He is, so, hey, great. So thank you. Because that's mandatory that we have a city attorney, and it's also important that we have a good one, and we're lucky to have both. The other question was parking. There'd been some discussion about where parking should be, and I tried to get it over under the police chief. Police chiefs hate parking citations, and I, it's such a function of City Hall. And I see it's kind of hanging down there underneath Dave Warren. Is that is something that would, that would imply a greater level of activity with the First Floor folks?
Perhaps. Dave and I haven't talked a lot about this yet, although I've talked, discussed some things.
You're letting him know tonight.
Yeah. But there may be some changes there. Part of, part of the reason for doing this, as I mentioned, is to see what, you know, what of my load could be taken off so that I can work on some other priorities that the council has designated for me. So, but again, as I mentioned, until we get that Assistant Finance Director position, that's going to be hard, because I want to be the first to state that Dave worked harder than anybody in the city, and I admire him for that, and I appreciate what he does. But there may be opportunities. Parking is something that, there may be something that we can do there that I've looked at and I need to evaluate to where there may be some changes there that we can do, and I'll work with Dave Warren on that.
Okay. One more question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Under City Engineer, is, as this list of responsibilities is listed here, we have a Water Reclamation Facility, and it took a long time to get me to not call it the Sewer Plant. So now we're, but it actually, our city engineer, she's going to be in charge with all of the pumping stations too. So should that not imply plural or facilities or?
It could.
The movement of?
Yeah, the Water Reclamation Facility, or does, their, their people do supervise those pumping facilities. So, yeah, we could make it Pearl, that would be appropriate, yeah.
Because this is something that'll be available on a lot of different, in the website and what have you in the future.
Platforms.
Platforms, thank you, Mr. Clarici. This, and so the clearer we make it now, that seems a little silly. It's important. We want to imply, and I think that that's an excellent reassignment in getting it away from public work, getting it over under the city engineer. So much of that stuff is high-dollar, highly regulated. All those employees out there have to have state and federal licenses. If things go wrong out at that plant, there's a lot of repercussions for the individuals as well as the city. So having that under the city engineer's venue seems like that is an extra, nice, fine tune, and also including the fact that any of our other waste facilities, the pumps, would also be under that purview, I think it helps clarify.
So what did you say?
Just make it plural.
Oh.
Just to make, so then we can make it clear that this is any of the facilities.
Okay.
And who knows, there may be, with some new growth, there may be a new pumping facility out there in our future, so. And, and I would just, with comment just quickly, and you've already touched on it, Cleve, and that would be my only concern with giving Dave, getting him up that, way up the ladder now, you're out of the bottom, is just your existing workload. You have so many commitments, and again, you're in similar realms to the regulated world. You have to do your audits, you have to do your on-time, you know, reviews. And so love to see you have the opportunity to grow, but I just want to make sure that we don't overwork you and you're already so committed. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Actually, I'd like to piggyback on Vice Mayor Cunha's comments. Under the city engineer, what does new development entail? That's a new, new title here.
New, well, that's common. New development is if there are developments that require engineering review. So if it's a new subdivision or whatever, and quite often, planning will refer something to engineering for review and comment on development plans.
Got it.
So that's what that's referring to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Barelli?
I kind of want to piggyback on what Mark said about Dave. Like with Cleve, we're trying to get rid of some of his obligations and free him up. And I'm, I'm concerned too that we're loading Dave up with, and we're going to, you know, so I'm not sure we're succeeding. And I just, I hope we thought this out.
Yeah, and that's why I want to stress over and over again, this cannot really succeed in terms of freeing me up and putting Dave in that position, what he can do, until we can find a way to hire that Assistant Finance Director position.
What are we, what are we looking at? And what do we have to, how much are we looking at? Can we just do a part-time or?
I, I look, no, no, it really, it really needs to be somebody that can take on that day-to-day operation and let Dave handle the, the higher-level financing duties. But, you know, he can handle the audit, the year-end, and things like that, to have somebody that can really supervise the day-to-day. So we, we looked at a couple of scenarios that included that, and I want to say, I don't remember, Dave, around $70,000 increase to, to do it? Or was it more than that? Do you remember?
Net of cost recovery, it was about $70,000.
That's what I recall, yeah. So there's, there's some other changes that would take place. For example, I don't know if you recall or not, but we did approve and we're trying to recruit and hire right now a part-time account clerk that can help Dave with, with some of those grant, grant funds and...
Oh, we still are pursuing that?
We are, yeah. That, that's in your budget. If we hired this position though, that, if we hired the Assistant Finance Director, that position would be necessary. So that would be a savings we could look at there. So there's some things that would come into play depending on how you do that, so.
Okay. Councilmember Clarici?
Any questions? Although it sounds almost like you're looking for a controller sort of function?
Currently?
Yeah, I mean, this, this box up here, the box that hasn't been filled.
Some of the functions of the position would be controller in nature, but it would really be the day-to-day things that I do.
Okay. All right. No, that makes, that's fine. I think it should be noted, and in fact, you've mentioned it in the budget, this is sort of a global statement. For anyone that looks at an org chart and a bunch of boxes and thinks, oh my gosh, they're going crazy, we haven't, we're not hiring anybody new. We're actually going to save a little bit of money just by some of the shuffling of the positions around and the, and the things. And it's important to note, folks still need to remember this, we operate with how many fewer people than we did in 2000 and whatever, 10?
Eighteen.
Eighteen fewer people, which is a good 20%, 20-something percent of the workforce. So this city has been working with fewer people for 10 years almost. And the stress on staff is showing. Now, you can't just hire people because you don't have the money. So you got to find the money to hire somebody. But the, the conversation about finding this, this Assistant Finance Director, and then some of the other boxes as well, is critical because you won't get the best results if you don't have enough people. And that doesn't mean you're going to go like the county and have crazy stuff going on. Sorry, county, I shouldn't say that. But you have to have enough people to make sure that you're running with some level of efficiency.
That's right.
So anyway, folks just need to know that. This city has been working with fewer people now than is for, and has been for some time. It is, it is the new normal. I mean, the fact that we had, we have less money in real dollars, and also fewer people than we did 10 years ago, is now just a fact of life. And, but folks should know that. The staff does yeoman's work every day. This reflects a change. And I think the reason why you have the box, even if it's nobody in it, is it shows that you're moving in that direction, and you're going to someday, hopefully, have the resources to put somebody in that box. And then there's a few others too. We certainly need road crew people, we need sewer crew people, we need both labor and folks in the office to help us out. So anyway, I think folks should not lose sight of that. This is not a fattening of the, of the staff at all. This is just bending to the reality of the work that these folks have to do.
Well said. Thank you so much for highlighting that. Councilmember Saragosa?
Just wanted to throw out there that I would be open to looking at this position being filled sooner. You know, at my previous jobs, when we were looking at PYs for the Franchise Tax Board, you know, when we could bring in people that could bring in more money to the, they paid for themselves. And so if this can free up Dave so that we can look at grant opportunities for other efficiencies, you know, it can pay for itself. And so I understand the need to be fiscally prudent. I also know that the longer we keep something out, the more expensive it gets. And so I'm not opposed to seeing a plan come forward sooner for this position, even if it means we wouldn't be doing the other position. If we could just combine that together and bring it forward. Because I do think when you have the right people in place and you're, you have that ability to bring that revenue in, it'll pay for itself. So I'd love to see more grant opportunities. I'm happy to work with staff on those too, where we could come out of Sacramento and the feds. But I, I personally would like to see us look at that position sooner rather than later.
Might it be possible to look at it during the mid-year budget review process? Is that...
Yeah, we can, we can get some, some information ready for that and have you consider it that time, yeah.
I really agree with, with you, Michael. I do.
We've said that about code enforcement, that it can pay for itself.
Right. All right. Now I'd like to open the public comment on this item. Come on down. Good evening, Sue.
Hi, Sue. Wow, tall person. Sue Taylor. So I was just trying to, people send me panic emails and say, can you go check on this? And this is why I end up here a lot of times. So I've kind of been researching this and still trying to get my head wrapped around it. And it sounds like you guys just got some of these documents. But just in concern for budget and funding is, it'd be nice to have seen like a whole year budget of what that means in rearranging all these things. Maybe a 2019 and 2020 budget instead of just a six-month budget. Another thing is, that was, and I get comments that I'm also sharing by other people, that I'm always the front, it seems like. So don't look at, this is all me. Such major decisions should be left to the incoming council, was one of the texts that I got. So it's a thought, it's interesting that you're trying to have this all done by January 1st, when your new council's, I guess, coming in. So I'm curious if this is something that should wait. But it sounds like you put a lot of thought to it. Have you looked at what these rearrangements will mean in pensions? And can the city support that? You had cuts in recession, and do we know that the recession's over? Are you sure that we're going to have a, a current stream of income that's going to cover these positions? And then I, when I read through the staff report, something that I was curious, there's a statement that says, currently both Development Services Department and Community Service Department have become so big in their scope that they have been, they have been difficult to manage efficiently. I'm curious what the scope is. Is this big scope necessary? I do have concerns of the direction of the city when it comes to development. When we, you know, everybody's considering these fires and what they're looking at, but sometimes they don't always look at the whole picture. And when you look at a narrow valley-type community such as ours with one artery out whenever there's a fire, is it, the state has had pretty much a mandate for the last 20, 30 years to do higher density without cars, without egress, without proper parking. And communities follow those agendas because then they get more funding for transportation. And is this not maybe a good time to think about these high-density projects? We almost approved, well, I think you did approve, a high-density, very high-density senior housing development without proper parking or egress around that facility. Would that have been a really healthy thing to have if you had a fire of the magnitude like Paradise? Sometimes, and I've complained about this a lot, the, the development planning manuals are really driving more towards high-density, I think you can all agree to this, because you've all kind of gone there, without these health and safety issues. So I'm just concerned when you, I also dialed into that new development under the City of Engineer, and maybe is that something that, you know, what is that new development that you're proposing? And will you consider health and safety in, in these activities? And are we just building this up so that we can do more development within the city? I don't oppose development, if it's good health and, you know, safety-minded, I work in that industry. So, but because I work in that industry, I do see a loss. I mean, the things that I had to do 10 years ago to make sure a commercial project or residential project was safe, they don't require that anymore. The state's almost saying, don't even look at it. Just do this in a more intensified fashion so we can get more people into a certain area. So hopefully you'll, I know this might be seeming like I'm going off track, but when I see how much that you're planning for under the Development Services and Engineering Services are two big, major reasons for these realignments, I just hope you consider the overall, you know, scope of what the city's planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments?
Yes, Kirk. Madam Mayor, the, the concepts that were described generally make sense, because I don't know of any municipality that has public works and Parks and Recreation's under one roof. It's been amazing that it's one person who's done that, and so seamlessly. Usually the way to really tell someone's got a good job is you never hear from them. You don't hear what they're doing. It's getting up in the middle of the night to take care of water pipes and all those kind of things. So that certainly makes sense. You're not going to find another Steve Yule necessarily writing down the pipe. Likewise, for, for Dave, he's already been doing those functions, as Cleve points out. So that's there. A couple concerns. One is that the discussion about saving some money just is kind of maybe illusory, because you have some positions you're going to have to fill at some point, like Dave's assistant, who we all agree is going to be needed. And, and so you really talked about much more money. So there really are some, some issues related to being able to pay pensions. What are those costs going to be? I don't think they're out here for you to consider. And something that's this important seems like it's something that should be looked at over a larger period of time than just a few days, because there are major implications. Again, I don't know what, it wouldn't make much difference with a couple new members if you're going to have that in, in another few weeks. But it seems like it's appropriate to do that and give some time to look at these things. You know, last time, I raised a question that was based on typographical error. I asked about computers based on what I read that said three computers, it was actually five. This is not an effective way to be able to ask nitty-gritty questions on something that complex as this kind of plan. And so I think, you know, continuing it to, to be able to explore it more. I knew I'd need a forensic, you know, appraiser, an accountant to go, go through a lot of these things, to figure out which money came from L and which came from H and so on. So I just think it needs more time to look at, because it, it just definitely makes... So, I just think it needs more time to look at because it just definitely makes sense, but there's no way to realistically look at it very closely. I'm glad you have, and I'm convinced, Mayor, you did. But, you know, in the last couple of days, for some of you to get the papers, it's just like us, being able to look at them at the same time. These are very important things to do, to look at, and they do need some more time and more study to be able to do it well. It's not really going to be a savings of a few thousand dollars because you've got all these slots you've got to fill down the road, and then you're going to have to put in benefits, pensions, and things like that to figure out what those kind of costs are when we're kind of coming up on that big problem about paying pensions. And that's why I just think it needs more time. Public deserves that. Again, it's rushed to do a lot of things towards the end of the year when you get a new council coming in. Having a secret committee to go in and look at, you know, you haven't even named them or won't name them publicly to go look at how we're going to handle the old City Hall buildings, those are the kind of things where I think we need more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You may say one positive thing about Steve. Yes, you may.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Sue, again. The most depressing thing that I saw that Steve was going to retire on the 22nd. He's just been fabulous to work with on the events that we do. I think we have the best Parks and Rec in the city here, and he's been amazing. And I'm just really depressed that he's leaving, but thank you for your service, and I hope you can find a public servant as good as he is. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. We really appreciate that. Steve deserves that. Yeah, thank you. And speaking of Steve, I think I'll close public comment at this point, so thank you so much. Steve's retirement is really, I know Cleve has been working on this for an awful long time, but it has precipitated this reorganization because do we fund Steve's position under our current organization? Or is this a chance to remake things based on our workloads and our current realities? And so, it's a natural time to do this. And Pierre, I would like to ask the question, is there any, how many high-density projects are under consideration right now?
We don't have any. We don't have any high-density. You mean multifamily developments?
Yeah, high-density developments.
Right. I took some copious notes of one of the previous speakers saying that the city approved a high-density senior development. I was curious of what that was. It escapes me, but currently, we've been processing a lot of single-family, mainly, primarily, single-family developments and some commercial developments.
Okay.
But I don't recall that we have any apartment or multifamily. We've been receiving a lot of inquiries about such projects.
All right.
On properties that are zoned for multifamily.
By, right, yes.
But only inquiries at this point in time.
But nothing under consideration right now?
Nothing under consideration.
All right. Thank you very much.
Remember when we had to change the zoning, and we did bring that, we did focus on that the state was making us go to approve.
For the RENA.
RENA numbers.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I can comment on that.
I'm wondering if maybe that's how the confusion.
Pierre, yes? Did you have any comments?
Yes, I can comment on that. That exercise did not approve any particular development.
No, I know it didn't. I'm just wondering if that's how.
What it did, no, but this is for the public, mainly this response. So, the staff came up, what we called a housing opportunity overlay. And yes, correctly stated, it was to meet our RENA numbers mandated by the state of California, that we provide for adequate lands zoned to provide for a density where somebody can come in then and provide for affordable housing. It basically relate to the higher density makes it more affordable. So, we did create with a housing overlay. It was overlaying on some existing zoning. Some of that zoning was zoned commercial, some was zoned for multifamily, but it just allows for higher density. But we have not received any application yet to do any high-density. No formal application, just a lot of inquiries.
All right. Thank you. Any further council questions or comments?
Can I make just a couple of comments? Just a couple of things. I wanted to assure everyone, as far as pension costs, those are included in the total cost that we're showing, that include in the savings. Dave calculates full impact of those positions with the changes we're making.
And that is a cost savings of $7,388 with pension costs.
That's correct. Now, I recognize that does not include that Assistant Finance Director position that we want to look at, but bottom line is, if the money is not there when we look at a mid-year, we'll have to find other ways to do things.
And I mean, in terms of this reorganization or proposed reorganization, every year, there are positions that sit there that aren't filled. I mean, you could make that argument about any given fiscal year that we go through when we do the budgeting. You say, well, there's four positions. Look at, that could blow your budget. And yeah, we know that, and we don't fill them because we don't have any money. So, and, you know, hey, I've got a shelf life of, you know, a couple of hours here. So, you know, I mean, I, you know, my words are rapidly becoming irrelevant, but.
But it's not true.
But the idea is that, for one thing, this has not been rushed. We're not running around. Steve's retirement and some other retirements have presented us with some opportunities, quite honestly. I mean, it's true, you know? The reason that we have public works, as was already mentioned, public works under the Park and Rec Department because we had to, because otherwise, there wouldn't have been anybody, well, somebody would have done it, but I mean, it had to be done that way at the time. They were dealing with a crisis situation. It's absolutely correct. You might be hard-pressed to find a town that has that going on. Excuse me. So, anyway, if folks want to wait till, if you all want to wait for the next council to be seated, that's fine with me, but I don't think it's going to buy you a lot. And I think that those of us that have been up here for a few years kind of understand what the city struggles with, and we're prepared to make a decision that I think will actually be a benefit to the new council when they're be seated because they won't have to deal with this stuff. It'll be one less thing that they'll have to worry about, and they'll be able to get about the business of running the city better. And I miss the memo about a secret, maybe this is what happens when you lose. They stop putting you on the secret committees, and I'm a little upset by that, so.
I was wondering about that secret committee.
I feel a little upset that.
I don't think there are any secret committees.
And no one has come up and said they're sorry to see me go. So, anyway.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of comments.
Vice Mayor Acuna.
Just to verify with Cleve, and I appreciate him, the financial concerns are real, and the budgetary and the retirement issues are real, and we do not take those things lightly. It's a huge problem statewide, and sadly, it didn't miss us when they passed out debt. The only vacant box that's on this blue org is just the Assistant Finance.
That's correct.
So, everything else is an existing person or an existing function. And I can see where there could be some concern, new development, when you look under using the City Engineer, for example. And that's something that they always do. That's a project review function to where if someone is going to be putting in a new driveway.
Or like Niemann's.
Yeah, Niemann's is an example. It doesn't mean that there are these hundreds of units pending out there. It is a function of all city engineering departments to review everything that's built in the city, whether the city is building it or a private individual or corporation is building it. So, that is an ancient function of city engineering, and it's just correctly called out here that that work is done under that department. You could call it project review, I suppose, but then that could blow up projects. So, it's just a matter of, you could play semantics all night, I suppose. So, that is not an indication that anything is going on. This is a process that Cleve will tell you. He's glad to have me off his back because I've been talking to him about it all year. So, if that's secret, I don't know about that. This is very well thought out. This is an efficiency that's going to let the new council in January start off with a very clear idea of who does what and those positions that are filled and what those functions are going to be. And I would again thank Cleve and all the department heads and the police chief for all of their input throughout this year in culminating in the work in October, November to complete this. Then I would like to spend just a moment to thank Pierre Rivas, who very bravely stepped out of the box as a really well-renowned planner and started managing sewer plants and got me to not call it that anymore. It's a water reclamation facility. And the next thing I know, as I'm back on the council, so he's bringing half a million-dollar pumps forward and doing staff reports on UV filtration systems and so on and so forth and making sure that we don't fall in the sites of the water resources part, that we're, he's very proudly run a compliant plant down there. And I know he's had the support of all the employees that work at that plant. So, boy, if that isn't stepping out as a planner role, I don't know whatever it could be. So, thank you very much. And then, I left Steve for second because back in 2008, when the Great Recession hit and Dave Warren wouldn't even tell us what money was in the bank, Steve Yule wound up being in charge of pretty much everything. He was once, back fondly remembered when he only had to be worried about Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
And the next thing Steve knew, he was in charge of snowplows, sewer plants, exploding manholes, leaking pipes, landslides, and a few other things that I can't think of. But he stood up for this community time and time again, and I appreciate Sue's recognizing all of the great things that Steve has done. At the same time, making sure that we have a darn good park and recreation program, that one, an aquatic center. We have continued to serve not only our citizens, but thousands of county residents year after year. So, I want to thank Steve, I'll start now, and I'll continue on for the next several weeks, thanking him for all that he has done and wearing a multiple of hats and never once, I don't think he ever told Cleve that he couldn't get it done.
That's true.
We got it taken care of, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving revised job descriptions and approving and affirming a new salary schedule per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Wait, with John Driscoll.
With John, additional, we're going to put the city attorney back in the org chart.
Put the attorney back in.
Do I have a second? Second. All right. John Clarici seconded that. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, I would like to give a hearty congratulations to our new department directors.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was so overwhelmed by you including the chart. I should have told, you should have roll call on that.
All right, never mind. Never mind. You're right. Oh, you're right. Forgive me. I was so excited. All right. Roll call, please, Regina.
Vice Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici.
Yep.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Thomas.
Aye. And with that, I will offer a hearty congratulations to our city attorney, who's back in, and our new department heads, City Engineer Rebecca Neets and the Director of Public Works, Rick Ferrera. And then, I guess a congratulations is dropped to you for the whole new, more mantles placed on your shoulders as Assistant City Manager and Current Director of Finance. So, congratulations to all of you. This is, it's well-deserved, and I look forward to this next year.
So, does this mean Steve only has to take care of the parks for the next three weeks and he can retire?
No, this is approved December 29th.
Sorry, Steve.
So, Steve is not off the hook. Yeah. But congratulations to all of you. We have an amazing staff, and we appreciate each and every one of you.
There's some amazing people in there.
There are. All right. Item 12.2, adopt revisions to the City Council handbook. This was one other thing I wanted to get done before I leave office because I remember when I was mayor, the first time, it fell on my fellow council members who took pity on me and told me what I needed to do as mayor. And when it came time to December, I remember Carl Hagan saying, where was you, Mark? Saying, you know, you need to write a letter to the staff. I do? It's like, okay. So, I don't want future mayors to have to rely on, you know, the goodwill of their fellow council members. I already did my Christmas letter, yeah. Thank you. So, the revisions before you today in the City Council handbook really reflect clarities to the duties and the role of mayor, as well as how to handle social media in times of crisis. That's something we've never had before. I made some mistakes in that area that I learned from, and so, no doubt, the City Council handbook will be a living and breathing entity that you will want to revise as time goes on. But any comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry. I took over.
No. Most of these recommendations were yours, so I'm fine with it. Go ahead.
She thinks they're great.
Are there any comments or questions by my fellow council members?
I guess I noted a couple of corrections, and I just found another one, that Mr. Warren would be a gas dad.
Uh-oh.
It's almost worse than missing the city attorney. On the introduction and overview, we have a $14 million budget noted there, and she's a whole bunch more than that now. Page one. Operating budget of over 14 million. What should that be today, Dave?
19 million.
19 million.
Well, we may want to just.
Or just eliminate that line.
Eliminate the number.
I don't think we want to put a number.
No, eliminate the number.
Just say millions.
Good catch.
Say multi-million dollars.
It could be like McDonald's.
Multi-million dollar budget.
Over a million served.
Billions served.
Or under a billion.
Good catch.
But yeah, let's get that one. And then I had.
Not enough.
Yeah. Please send donations. On, it's a couple of places, on page five, we still list, sadly, we needed to correct this, is the elimination of the Historical Advisory Committee, and we need to change Measure H to Measure H and L. Right.
And then, seven standing committees, not eight.
Yeah. And then it continues on page six where we need to remove historical and then update the name for Measure H and L. And I checked with Cleve and these other boards to, do all still exist? The Board of Building, the Building Board of Appeals. So, that was that one. And then I had one other suggestion. Oh, the page?
20.
20. I think the meeting time is still shown, you know, 7 o'clock. Yeah, up there at the beginning of the page. Meetings are scheduled for 6:00, or if you want to do, do a way with it. The other, a little bit more significant change was placing items on the agenda. My suggestion was to take the sentence beginning, and that's on page 20, under placing items on the agenda, the sentence that begins with, "Under normal circumstances, council members may make a request," moving that to the beginning of that item, because that's the normal way that we add. We add items. Middle of page 20.
The very last sentence would be moved to the beginning of the paragraph.
So, the last sentence, move it up as the beginning, or we can, and we can rework the balance of that if you want. I feel pretty strongly that we need to move that sentence up and clarify that.
Good.
Because that's a process that has served us well for several years now.
Yeah. Good. Thank you so much.
And those are mine. Thank you.
Any other comments or additions? All right. I'd like to open this up to the public. Any comments on these additions to our City Council handbook? All right, I'll bring it back. And any further discussion? So, with that, I would like to move this item and approve the changes as recommended with Vice Mayor Acuna's additional suggestions.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. And hopefully, this will help councilmembers Thomas and Taylor and Saragosa and everyone else that follows us as mayor, so, great. Thank you all for getting that done. Item 12.3, oh, this is a good one, too. Adopt a resolution approving a $5,000 budget appropriation from the general fund contingency for the city manager to participate in the 2019 American Leadership Forum. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, for those of you who are not familiar with the American Leadership Forum, I've put a little bit of information about it in here. I'll just read the portion of one of these paragraphs. "The American Leadership Forum gives leaders from the most diverse elements of their community an opportunity to build trusting relationships with each other and to develop skills in collaboration that can be applied to benefit the community. As the network of bonded leaders grows, so too does its potential to bring about positive constructive change." I was impressed with that, so I wanted to start with that. So, the American Leadership Foundation is a program, or American Leadership Forum, excuse me, that, it's a year-long program. This, the next year will start in May of 2019, go through a year, and then there's some continuing commitment beyond that also. But it is basically a meeting once a month, and some other things, and then there's a week-long program in August, and there's a few other things throughout the year. The previous members of the forum nominate people for this. There's 300 that are nominated, and then 25 are recommended to move forward in the program. I received an invitation this year to move into the program. The cost for the program, for the one-year program, is $12,500, so it's a fairly significant amount. And so, I've tentatively committed to be in the program. I'm requesting that the council approve a portion of that budget, or $5,000 is what I'm requesting. I'm also requesting that, to get a scholarship through the program, they have scholarships, and then I would fund the remaining amount. So, that's the purpose of this item tonight, is to request that you consider helping me out in funding this program that I would participate in over the next year. So, with that, I'll answer any questions. Also, refer you to Mayor Thomas and City Engineer Rebecca Neves, who both have gone through this program, and maybe even Dennis Thomas, who I believe is in the program currently in the current year. So, if you have any questions, more detailed questions, they maybe can answer them better than I can.
And I'd like to just kind of piggyback on your, on your comments. I think it's a really important opportunity for you. In your position, you have not taken any training in, or, in depth, training is a misnomer, because it's not that you need training, but additional insights and a chance to connect with, you know, leadership and principles and ideas that would help, you know, recharge you and support you in your work with the city. And you haven't done that these last eight years. And especially being at the city manager position, that's a lonely position. It's not like you can go to staff and find support there for, you know, what you're dealing with. It's lonely at the top. And I think this would be a tremendous support to you moving forward, that after eight years, to kind of recharge your batteries, give new ideas, and mainly also to have a deep connection and link to top regional leaders. Cleve mentioned that this is, you know, a year-long program, but it is also a lifelong opportunity and commitment, that you will, for the rest of your life, have access to these regional leaders, you know, to help you deal with the challenges that you deal with on a day-in and day-out basis, you know. And if we take the $5,000 divided by eight years, that's essentially $625 a year in training. And I think Cleve's certainly worth that. So, you know, I'm excited for this potential to support you in moving the city even boldly forward in the next phase of where we need to go. So, any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I, I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of folks who, like me, watch Channel 6, and there's a program on every Friday night, and I think on Sundays, and it's narrated by Scott Sypek as a, and he is a past member of this. And if you notice that, he has so many guests that are graduated from this particular, and I think it just shows the scope of the folks that are out there that have completed this program, and why, and who, like, when Cleve finishes, but like you were saying, contacts and everything, and it's just, I think it's great, and I'm really in favor, and I'm glad that his name was put in the file.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments? Yeah. I think that, you know, Cleve touched on the fact, you know, 300 leaders are selected each year, and only 25 are invited. And the fact that Cleve was invited, it speaks very highly to who you are, and what you can contribute to the organization, and what you can get with this top leadership training. So, with that, I'll open public comment. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Sure, as long as I'm here, just to let you know. I just echo everything you just said. I'm sure your colleagues agree with you, but just from the standpoint of the public. I appreciate the work that Cleve does. He's an exceptionally talented guy. I've often said that, given the policies of the City Council, I wish he wasn't as effective. But, you know, it is an important program, because all professions have those kind of things. I just hope that maybe during the year, you can share a few tidbits that you learn along the way, to share with us. But it's a great idea, and a modest expense when you amateurize it as you did over the last eight years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dennis Thomas. I'm a current member of the Alf class of 22, and Cleve, if he has the opportunity, he'll be class 23. And one of the things, I went online, and I tried to look at, to talk about, a little bit about what Alf is. And I found a short paragraph I'd like to read to you, so you get a broader depth of understanding. And it's kind of taken in context here, talking about the fellows program. And it's characterized by its focus on human capacity to collective intelligence, and how people are in relationship to each other. The Alf program begins a process of uncovering principles of the different kinds of leadership. When people who represent high achievement in different spheres of influence come together to learn, think their creative and problem-solving powers as a group can lead to highly effective coordinated actions. And a lot of fancy words to say that it really helps him with the community, with every aspect of his position. Wendy hasn't talked about, she was in class 15, and it was right when she was getting started as city, um, city council. And it provided her with such a depth of knowledge, and the things that she brought, when we started the community meetings, and how she brought those together, and it was in coordination with her experience through Alf, that really helped this community through some really challenging times. And a lot of that is attributed to Alf. You know, you did an amazing job on your own, and the Alf brought just that much deeper depth of understanding of how to connect and work with the community. And I watched her go through that, and it was an amazing process for her. So, long story short, I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Really appreciate it.
That's just exactly what I'm talking about with watching Scott's program. You can just tell. And then, that's what it's all about. And I'm glad you gave us that explanation, because that really kind of explains what I was trying to say about the people that he has on there, and what he, you know, tries to achieve by imparting that information to, like, so.
It's been a joy to see you on your journey. So, and we can't wait for you to embark on yours. So, any other discussion? All right. With that, I would like to approve the request to contribute $5,000 to Cleve's Alf fund. All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Thomas.
Aye. So, congratulations, Cleve. All right. Item, let's see, switch around the page here. 12.4. All right. Mr. Warren, we are, all kinds of things on this item. We are adopting a resolution. I will let you, actually, this is, this was supposed, no, 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 I was saying, never mind. Yeah. You're up.
Never mind. Dave, do you want to cover? I was going to cover this.
Oh, you worked.
I should have let Dave, because he did most of the work on it, but.
It's Mr. Warren. Oh, I was looking up here.
Maybe we'll tag team on it.
Okay, never, never mind. You're up, Cleve.
So, this is, your last meeting, we discussed our capital outlay budget, and some expenditures that we wanted to proceed with immediately. We reviewed kind of the entire program, and then we came up with a list of expenditures that we felt were important to proceed with right now, and we're proposing to do those with existing reserves, basically, to pay for those. And you have a list in your, in the back of your, of this report, that outlines what those are. There's some engineering, computers and software for that department. There's some server replacements, one vehicle for Public Works, or Parks, actually, that was in Steve. And then, a couple other PCs, workstations. And then, you have further items, which are primarily vehicles and equipment, that we're still working on, looking at probably doing a lease purchase of those. The initial items that I talked about total about $78,000, and they'll be paid for with existing reserves. The remaining items total about $258,000. And again, we're, Davis, Dave Warren's currently working on bids for leases, so that we can come out back with a recommendation how to pay for those. I want to also state that we are also working on the remaining capital outlay items. We have quite an extensive list. If you recall, the full amount that is included with your, with your report here tonight is about $812,000. That may be adjusted somewhat based on some changes we will make to it, but it's still going to be a fairly significant number. And probably closer to mid-year, we will come back with, possibly with a recommendation on how to proceed with that, and going forward from year to year to keep that equipment, those equipment purchases up where they need to be. I know at the last meeting, I just wanted to mention, too, that Councilmember Acuna, I believe, talked about a little bit about not only capital outlay, but CIP projects, and what we can do there. I do want to mention that one of the things I've asked Steve Yule to look at, and I don't know if he's going to get to that before he leaves, but if he's not, we'll pass it on to a successor. There is a park grant that we will be getting next year, about $185,000 that will be coming to us. That's automatic, we don't, I mean, we have to apply, but it's a per capita formula, so we get it automatically. And so, I've asked Steve to start looking at, you know, what are going to be our priorities for that?
Log roll?
Log roll.
Log roll.
Steve's log, log roll.
There are.
You'll log.
Yule log. Oh, I love it. I love it. Yule log. Ah, tis the season.
Oh, my God.
Sorry, Cleve.
You need to explain to the new coming what the joke is on that.
That will give us the opportunity to look at some of these CIP projects that we know are out there, especially perhaps like our trail, the improvements that are a high priority for us. There's some things coming up at our aquatic center. There are going to be some, I believe it's the resurfacing of the pool, correct?
He's swallowing hard.
Steve, that's going to be a fairly significant cost. And some other things, but we also want to look at what ways we can, you know, add to that funding that will be coming in. Looking at other grants and et cetera that we might can add to that.
So, it's not specific, then? I mean, we get the grant, and we, as long as it pertains to.
You mean discretionary?
Parks, yes.
Wow.
It is, it is. That $185,000 is pretty, at least my understanding of it, and the way I've looked at it, is pretty open to how we, what we want to put it to.
Nice.
It is one-time funding, unfortunately.
That's all right, we'll take it.
I wish I could say it was on a annual basis, but one-time funding. And there are also, I believe, some competitive grants involved with that, too, but I haven't seen notices on those yet. So, we will continue to look at those and other CIPs, but this, the capital outlay is kind of our big, big item that we need to focus on right now, but we will come back with something, look at some of the CIPs also.
Great.
With that, our recommendation is that you approve the immediate purchase of those items that were outlined, approve of those budget amendments that are outlined in, or appropriations that are outlined in the resolution, and then authorize us to continue to work on the funding options for the remaining items, the $258,000 worth of items.
Okay, great. And I know this has been in the works since all of our budget workshops this year, and appreciate all of staff's work in finding ways to bring this forward and make this work with these critical needs. Any staff comments, or council comments?
No, I'd just like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Let's open the public comments, but hold that thought.
Okay.
All right. Anyone like to comment on this item?
She knows.
It's nice that we are, I know we talked about this at the last meeting as well, we're just formalizing it tonight. So, come on down, Sue. Tell us what you think.
Oh, lucky you guys, you always get to find out what I think.
We always appreciate it.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and the person who comes to all this terrible budget I think that what you've got outlined as the urgent items here is a good outline. I would like to ask, how many trucks does the city own? And how many trucks do we actually need? Because it seems to me like we're still on the hook for $100,000 in basically interest costs for the last time we did a finance to own type of thing, a, yeah, a lease-to-own thing. And we're still paying $100,000 a year on that one. And how many trucks could we buy for that $100,000 if we don't do these lease-to-own things that cost us so much interest? I was really proud of our fire department when they stood up here and said, we bought our trucks with cash. Because I think that is the best possible way we can do it, is to own them outright instead of paying the cost of another truck every year in charges to have a lease. When I've looked at cars, purchase versus lease, I've always gone purchase. It makes better financial sense in the end. And so, that would be my input here, is to try and reduce the amount of lease-to-own things we do, and try to increase the amount of things that we pay for upright, and then we give them a lifespan, and figure in a budget that will replace them when their life is ended. Because all the good things come to an end, even our trucks. So, that would be my input.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Any other comments? All right, with that, I'll close the public comment portion. And I know we always weigh this in our budget cycles, purchase versus lease, and.
We've been talking about that, and.
It's a challenge.
There's two schools of thought, and I think that's what you're looking into, isn't it? Especially on the police cars.
Yeah, the police cars, darn things are so expensive, chief. And we went, we went down.
It's all your fault.
Actually, the new ones we're looking at now are only $40,000 instead of $50,000.
Oh, good.
So, I think when I started here eight years ago, I think we were getting them for around $34,000, and now they're, the same vehicle is basically $50.
Wow.
So, I mean, new technologies, et cetera, they're putting on them and all that. So, but yeah, we are, you know, I don't disagree with Ms. Rodman regarding, absolutely, I would prefer to pay cash, and I think Dave would, too, for all of our items, but there's a limited amount, and taking your reserves down too low, especially in today's economy is not recommended. So, you have to be careful of that. It is, but what's tomorrow's economy?
And our fleet is in such dire straits.
And that's it, we're, yeah, our, some of our, some of our trucks are just barely on the road, and.
On the mark.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't have that, I don't, I don't think Dave has either, the number of vehicles. I mean, we can get that for you, but I think we run very efficiently with our vehicles. Some of our guys double up, which is not always the best thing to do. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't, but we're running some vehicles that are definitely on their last leg, that's for sure.
We continue to operate this city very lean and mean.
We have approximately 14.
14.
But you got to remember, they're just not all just trucks. They all have special purposes.
Right.
Like, you got to worry about cross-contamination and things like that. So, there's some trucks that are specifically for water, and other for sewers, and street sweepers, and dump trucks. So, there's a wide variety within the fleet.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Do you have a comment?
Steve, does that include the street sweeper? The 14?
I'm sorry?
Does that include the street sweeper?
Yes.
The 14 fleet? Did a fine job in my neighborhood.
I'll tell you, they came out today.
Excellent operator.
Whoa, not a leaf to be found.
Even, even off the trees.
Brilliant street sweeping. Yeah.
Wiped out the whole neighborhood.
Amazing new.
I think, I think Councilmember Michael here might have actually something important.
No, actually, I have a question. Green Street looks great from the sweeper as well. No, I just had a question in regards to...
Can you pull your microphone down? Thank you.
No, I'm down.
Down, yeah. Get all tears off.
I just had a question on the server and printers. I mean, the costs aren't nearly as high as, obviously, the police vehicles. I'm wondering why we're doing cap, we're looking into capital leases on those, when we're doing cash on, and I understand the balance in terms of making sure we have a healthy reserve balance, but those seem like other, rather smaller purchases to doing leases, although I could, I guess, see it on printers almost, because there's just so many issues with printers. I think, we've always leased my own there, so I, but on the server, then, I guess, at least, I just didn't know why we would be doing a capital lease on that.
The, what we looked at is the critical need for it. The ones that, there is one server up above that is being replaced, that was a critical need one, that we were concerned about going out tomorrow, basically. So, that's what, that's what it came down to. Unfortunately, those servers are not cheap, as you can see, and so it was just a matter of what we felt we could do. As you, you already see that, you know, we are hitting into the water and sewer reserve funds, that we're a little bit concerned about, making sure those are there, so that is what we felt comfortable that we could do, and meet those immediate needs right now. Those other items are fairly critical, too, and we hope, like I say, come back just as quickly as we can with those, too, to get those done also. And we'll, we'll continue to look at this, if, looking at our current funds and et cetera, if we determine we can do more with outright purchase, we may recommend some of that to you, too, but...
Yeah, I would just say that on the servers, to the extent possible, I think if we can buy those, that would be a better use than leasing.
We can, we can look at that, yeah.
Right. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Borelli, did you want to move this item?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I would like to continue to move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item 12.5 was supposed to be on the consent calendar. Do we want a staff report on this item? Measure J report? All right. Would any member of the public wish to talk on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Actually, it's just a receive and file. Just acknowledge, we are acknowledging and filing. Well done. Well done, council. That was a heavy lift, and we always appreciate this report, so to see where we are on these funds, and help us understand where we are financially. We're at the end of the agenda, then. So, council reports from other agencies, transit? No meeting? Transportation, no meeting? LAFCO?
No meeting.
No meeting? SECOG?
There was a meeting.
Please tell us.
SECOG was eviscerated in the last election. I actually did not want to go, because I've been to SECOG meetings when somebody loses, and they all treat you like you've got a, like a rash. And, and it's not that they don't like you anymore, they do, but it's just weird, because everybody knows they're this far away from that same thing happening to them, and so they really, it's, you just don't want to think about it. I walked in the room and found out that six other people had fallen to the same fate that I did, and what's really amazing is, apparently, that is like an epic record for SECOG. They haven't had that much turnover in the board in ever, like, the collective memory of things, no one can remember. So, I felt better that there was a lot of other miserable people hanging around me. Anyway, it was funny, because there, to be honest with you, I don't even remember what we talked about. It was important stuff, but probably nothing really important to us, and, but it was a good thing. I'm glad I went, rather than avoiding it, because, because there are folks that actually care for you and those organizations, and, and the staff is great, like here. And, and so, yeah, so anyway, so SECOG, I have really nothing to report, except I went and, and had a ride with Brian Veer Camp, which I value a lot, that's one of the things I will miss. Anyway, not the time for that. And then, do you want to talk about the two-by-two?
Actually, first of all, I want to say, what an important asset you've been on the SECOG board, and I will say more this next council meeting, but your representative, representation of the city with the regional leaders at SECOG has been exemplary. I have so appreciated how you have just, you know, just been such a dedicated representative for us, and you've served on many of SECOG's committees, and that has been so important in bringing the rural voice to our regional neighbors, because it's easy to forget about us, and the needs of rural communities are so very different than the urban needs that, you know, most of them are facing. And you have just done an amazing job on SECOG, and it's been just a very critical contribution to this council.
Well, thank you, and actually, the most fun I've had is rubbing our half-cent sales tax in all of their noses, because they have almost an impossible time trying to pass one down there, so that has been fun. Well, thank you very much for your kind.
And I can't say how many leaders have reached out to me, you know, Tom Stollard, the mayor of Woodland, and former county supervisor, and several others have, have reached out to me and said, "What an amazing job you've done," and so, thank you.
So, I made a good choice when I appointed you, when I was mayor.
You did, you did, yeah. You take the two-by-two.
Oh, okay. I, geez, we talked about a bunch of things, but probably the most, I thought, I think, I think the most important one of them is the whole issue of homelessness. It's certainly something that's timely, it seems to be something that continues, and if anything, is getting worse. I used to be of the mind that you could, not ignore it, but it was almost like you kind of held it at arm's length, because, and not that I feel superior, or that it could never happen to me, none of those kinds of reasons that most people don't want to deal with homelessness, I just thought that it's, it's too much. Well, I've, I haven't said I'd come around, but one of the things we discussed was the idea of actually maybe supporting the idea of a shelter, supporting the idea of organizing things. Now, there's a bunch of things going on, there's the continuum of care in Opportunity Knox, there's the county through the CIO's office, and we have actually funded a position over there to look into this and help organize it, but I think that the situation is moving so quickly, not just here, but in the county and everywhere, for that matter, that we need to act more sooner rather than later. And so one of the issues we talked about, the two-by-two, was having potentially a joint meeting on the next council, and the next board of supervisors, to really talk about that, some back-and-forth after the meeting about when that should happen, probably not till April, but I strongly believe that we need to be in better contact with the folks that are out gathering information, and its home base, I think, is the name of the outfit, that's actually doing that on behalf of this consortium of groups, to really get a handle on, A, what they're doing, and then, B, what it's starting to tell them. They're not supposed to make a report, I think, till April, but I think that's too late. I really think that the next council will have to deal with it, and the community, all of us, will have to deal with it. So, that was the major portion of our discussion. We talked about a couple other things, and honestly, the one that I walked away with was that. Do you recall?
Well, of course, the fire evacuation plans, emergency services coordination, and all of that, which we continue to do.
Yeah, well, and not to talk about laundry here, but a lot of stuff between county and city, and then the state and the county and the city, and there's a lot of lessons to be learned. One thing I would like to say, and we've always talked about the fire, and you need to be prepared, there's no doubt. No one's going to argue that you shouldn't have an emergency preparedness plan, but there should be one thing to note. What happened in Paradise happens on forest fires frequently. I've been on fires that blow up, and they burn thousands of acres in minutes. They just do it in places where nobody lives. In this particular case, the fire happened right on top of a town who had a great plan. Emergency preparedness is very important, and we need to take care of that, because there's holes in our system that need to be dealt with, but...
They even rehearsed it.
Oh, I know. They, they don't, they, they got caught in a horrible situation that was unmanageable. So, we need to learn to be prepared from Paradise. The idea that you could, like, prevent it, or have a better outcome than they did, is unlikely, and I still say that the casualty rate, if it is in the range that they're talking about it being in, it is a miracle that as many people got out of that town as actually did. Human loss, loss of human life is a horrible thing, and the loss of one life is a horrible thing, but the fact of the matter is, is that town blew up in four hours. So, you imagine Plaserville blowing up in four hours, how many people might get left behind? But that was a discussion, but the homeless thing is really something, I think, that the council, the town, everyone's going to have to really take a hard look at, and maybe stop pushing on the problem, and God, I hate to say it, but maybe embrace it a little bit. And I don't even know what that means exactly. It's more of a visceral feeling on my part, that, that it's may, it may come to having to start to think about it in that way, which means something. It doesn't mean you give up things, but it means a different sort of approach, I think, and you folks, or those folks, and the county will have to deal with it, so.
So, good luck with that.
Yeah.
Happening all around us.
Tough stuff. Thank you so much, John. Appreciate it. Requests for future agenda items. Ready? Nope, all right. Clay Street environmental impact report status update. Mr. Ravas, where are we on this?
I'm going to turn that over to our new city engineer. She'll give you the update.
Well, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas. Vice Mayor Acuna, councilmembers. As requested, staff is here to provide an update to the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project. In April of this year, the public review and comment period for the draft environmental impact report, the EIR, was concluded. The city received 19 individual comment letters, 40 individual comment emails, eight letters from groups and organizations, and four agency comments. Since that time, staff has thoroughly reviewed the comments received, and is in the process of drafting responses to those comments and questions. The city also conducted a Section 106 consultation meeting with interested parties, such as the ancient order of the Druids, Friends of Historic Hangtown, and the local tribes, including the Waponis-Nisanam-Mewok tribe, and the Shingle Springs Band of Mewok Indians. One theme amongst the comments was the consideration of a potential of a historic district within the vicinity of the project. For the purposes of this federally funded project, the city and Caltrans have agreed to assume district eligibility under the National Register. This assumption prompted an update of the project's cultural reports, which is currently underway. The city and its consultant are in the process of evaluating each property within the draft historic district by applying the National Register criteria for evaluation, better known as the National Register Bulletin 15. Once that evaluation is completed, it will be included in the updated cultural reports. Staff collectively felt it would be helpful to have that information included in the final EIR as well. With the holidays coming up and current workloads, staff is anticipating having the cultural